All right.
Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. I want to recognize three Madison residents that we've lost in the last two weeks. Today was the service for Sal Luciano. As said in his obituary, he was Madison's son, and no one could argue with that. Salvador Patrick Luciano passed away on Tuesday, February 4th. He was born on St. Patrick's Day, and for an Italian seemed to be very proud of that. In 1929, attended St. Vincent Martyrs School, served as altar boy for the church. He was a member of the Madison High School graduating class of 1947, where he played football, basketball, and baseball. Sal served during the Korean conflict in the Army's heavy artillery, setting directional course for the big guns. He rose to the rank of Sergeant. And while on leave, his good fortune continued when he met his wife Anne Marie at a dance in Brookline on the Boulevard. They were married on July 4th, 1953. And he was, he's been part of the retail of Madison for 75 years. He began working with his father, Luciano, at Luciano's Food Market after school each day. And after his father Pat retired, Sal struck out on his own and launched The Locker Room, where I remember as a child going there with my mother, getting school clothes every year. It opened in 1966, and that was for almost 20 years. He then, his brother Pat joined him as a partner in 1985. They established Prima on Main, partnering with his daughter Denise, and then later his son-in-law Mark Conme. And that business continues, the Luciano tradition of quality and personal service. Sal never wavered his belief that a vibrant downtown was a centerpiece of his successful community, and anytime we visited, he would let us know that. And he gave generosity of his time, talents, and support of various causes that were dear to him. Over the years, he worked with The Chamber, Rotary Club, Huddle Club, Epic, Eva's Kitchen, Friends of Madison Shade Tree, Morris County Football Scholarship, and the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts. He has survived a devoted wife of 66 years, Anne Marie, loving children and spouses, Michelle, Patrick, Denise, and John. He's blessed, was blessed with seven grandchildren. And his request in lieu of flowers, donations be made to the Madison Volunteer Immigrants Corps. Also lost was Robert Bob Gumpel, passed away on January 31st. He was born in Newark, was employed by Jersey Mortgage Company for over 40 years, rises in the level of Chief Executive Officer and Chief Operating Officer. He was a resident of Madison, having moved here with his wife Jeanne in 1953, building a home on Edgewood. Coached Little League Baseball, was appointed to Planning Board in April 1969, where he eventually served as Chair. Also served on the Zoning Board of Adjustment from '73 through '77. Also appointed to the Mayor's Advisory Council in 1979. Faithful member of Grace Episcopal Church in Madison, where he served as usher and also on the vestry and as a warden. He leaves behind family, his wife Jeanne, 66 years, his children Herbert, Scott, Linda, Sherry, and Karen. Eleven great-grandchildren, or eleven grandchildren and four great-grandchildren. Also passing away today was Ann Carol Hellman, long, lifetime Madison resident, died at the age of 86. She, as it said in her obituary, she was raised on North Street, the capital of Madison. And she was a Madison resident for her entire life. Proud and regarded member of the Bermuda Club, where she served as President from '75 to '80. Volunteer softball coach, helped her team achieve multiple youth state titles. She is survived by her sisters Louise, Carmella, Mary Lou, her children Maureen, Patty, Nicholas, who continues the family tradition of the garage on Main Street. And there will be a visitation on Wednesday from 4:00 to 8:00, Madison Memorial Home, and a service at St. Vincent's on Thursday at 10:00 a.m. So let's take a moment to remember Sal Luciano, Bob Gumpel, and Ann Hellman, and their families. I have motion for the executive minutes of January 27.
Still moved. Second.
Already been discussed, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes of January 27.
Still moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome all. Got a couple announcements and a, some presentations. First, over the last two weeks, we had, in this very room, last, this past Wednesday, Cub Scout Pack 124 came in, where I took them through a, how government works. This is something I enjoyed with the Scouts, is really teaching the government. They get to do a mock council meeting, so they serve as council members, mayor, and get to pass an ordinance. The, they were discussing two different ordinances. One was to eliminate all speed limits in Madison. That one saw no action, but that one was an interesting one. And please Chief can comment on that later. But they did unanimously pass a townwide ban on smoking, so far more healthier than getting rid of speed limits. So it was great to have them here. Employees of the month of February for taking over the parking applications and annual parking permits, which is a major undertaking, Lisa Ellis and Michael Pelissier. Congratulations on becoming employees of the month yet again. And our anniversary for the month of February, Lieutenant James Blair, Madison Fire Department, 20-year anniversary on Saturday, the 15th. All right, do a, we're gonna pass a resolution right now, and then we're gonna do a couple of proclamations. Notes together here. This is a very special day, as we have our building lit up in purple. This may sound like I'm digressing a little bit, but it was something that hit me with the passing of Kirk Douglas, who lived to be 103. Is a reminder that people are still alive today, that we're born into a world where women could not vote. That 100 years seems like a long time, but it seems very short when you realize that people were born our life today in this world where women couldn't vote. So two things to recognize, the 100th anniversary of women's suffrage. We have Resolution R. 82-2020, Resolution of the Borough of Madison Supporting the Celebrated 100th Anniversary of Women's Suffrage. We will read this into the record.
Okay. Whereas, the year 2020 marks the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment to United States Constitution guaranteeing and protecting women's right to vote, and...
Whereas, this centennial offers an opportunity to commemorate a milestone of democracy, that the right of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the federal or state governments on account of gender, and...
Whereas, New Jersey has had a long storied history in the suffrage movement, with New Jersey women playing a crucial role in pursuing the rights of women to vote, and...
Whereas, in 1776, women property owners were enfranchised under the New Jersey State Constitution, which was unique in the nation at the time. However, in 1807, the New Jersey Legislature eliminated the property requirement for voting rights and limited the ballot to white males, and...
Whereas, in 1867, New Jersey residents Lucy Stone and Harry Blackwell organized the New Jersey Women's Suffrage Association, devoted to gaining women's suffrage, and...
Whereas, in 1909, New Jersey's first open-air suffrage rallies were held in Orange and Newark, led by Dr. Emma O. Gantz and Martha Klaxon, with the New Jersey Women's Suffrage Association collecting 5,000 signatures for a petition in support of the federal amendment guaranteeing and protecting women's constitutional right to vote, and...
And whereas, although the 1912 state referendum on women's suffrage was sadly defeated in New Jersey Legislature, a corner was turned for New Jersey and the suffrage movement, and...
Whereas, in 1913, an automobile rally led by General Rosalie Jones traveled through New Jersey on the way to Washington, DC, in a suffrage parade of over 8,000 marchers with many New Jersey women, including event organizer Alice Paul, and...
Whereas, in 1915, a second suffrage constitutional referendum was pursued in New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, and Massachusetts, the active campaigns by many suffrage organizations, including the passing of the Torch of Liberty via tugboats on the Hudson River from New York to New Jersey, but was defeated in all four states October 1915, and...
Whereas, in 1917, New Jersey suffragists Allison Turnbull Hopkins, Julia Holbert, Beatrice Reynolds Kincaid, and Minnie D. Abbott picketed in front of the White House as part of the silent sentinels, and subsequently were arrested and imprisoned, and...
Whereas, on June 4th, 1919, Congress passed the 19th Amendment, guaranteeing all American women the right to vote, and...
Whereas, on February 9th, 1920, New Jersey became the 29th state to ratify the 19th Amendment, granting women the right to vote, and...
Whereas, shortly after the ratification of the 19th Amendment, Margaret Laird and Jenny Van Ness were the first two women elected to the New Jersey Assembly in 1921. And in 1925, Rebecca Estelle Borjois-Winston of Estelle Manor was New Jersey's first woman mayor, and...
Whereas, the mayor and the council further recognized women of color who fought tirelessly for the right to vote, but were not enfranchised until the passage of the Voting Rights Act of 1965, which secured voting rights for racial minorities, and...
Whereas, the Borough of Madison wishes to honor New Jersey female suffragists of color Reverend Florence Sperring Randolph, Mary Burwell, Violet Johnson, and Bessie Brown Mention, whose leadership and activism helped pave the way for today's historic representation by a diverse group of women in Congress.
Now therefore, be it resolved, in honor of the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment, the Borough of Madison will light the municipal building in purple, one of the colors of the New Jersey suffrage movement, for the week of February 10th, and...
Be it further resolved that the Borough of Madison supports the efforts of New Jersey Suffrage Centennial, New Jersey Women Vote, and strongly encourages local celebrations of this historic milestone, and...
Be it further resolved, a copy of this resolution will be forwarded to the Governor, Secretary of State, and New Jersey League of Municipalities.
May I have a motion for Resolution R. 82-2020?
Mayor, I move Resolution R. 82-2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And now we have a proclamation to present. Council members, please come and join us here. I have asked Carmela Vitale, our council president, as our senior member, not counting me as a male, on the council to present the proclamation.
This is indeed an honor for all of us to do this. We've all been members of the League, and they work very, very hard at getting people out there to vote, which is the most important thing that any one of us do. So in order for us to recognize you, it's the 100th anniversary of the League of Women Voters of the United States, whereas the League of Women Voters was founded in 1920 as a mighty political experiment by the four mothers of the suffragist movement at the National American Women Suffrage Association, and... Whereas, its goal was to help 20 million women who were granted the right to vote by the 19th Amendment, understand and carry out their new responsibilities as voters, and...
Do the minutes.
Whereas, with the success of this effort, and the tireless efforts over the last 100 years to strengthen and uphold its mission to empower voters and defend democracy, the League has become a trusted, nonpartisan grassroots organization. And whereas, the League has sponsored legislation and fought in the courts to protect and strengthen voting rights and access for free and fair elections, for civil rights for all, including children and minorities, for community health, for public education for all people, for resource protection and conservation, and... Whereas, the League has consistently been noted for its nonpartisan election information, including sponsorship of candidate forums and information on state and local ballot issues, as well as its commitment to register, educate, and mobilize voters, and... Whereas, the League champions government systems that are open, transparent, inclusive, and equitable. And whereas, the League believes that active and engaged citizens irrespective of gender, ethnicity, or political affiliation are the hallmark of democracy. Do you want to read this, because it says you?
Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby proclaim February 14th, 2020, as League of Women Voters Day of Action. We honor and congratulate the League of Women Voters on its 100th anniversary, and commend the League for its significant contributions to empowering voters and making democracy work. Thank you so much.
I certainly want to thank the Borough of Madison for having this proclamation read tonight. Personally, I am here, living in New Jersey, because of my connection with Madison. As a child, I had cousins who lived on North Street, and, because I'm from Brooklyn, as you can tell. But every summer, I spent at least four or five weeks with the Gary Arrow family, and that's how I met my husband, because he lived right down the road, not North Street, Roscoe Avenue, that's where they lived. And then my aunt moved to Woodland Road, and I went to the football games, watched my future husband play ball, and that was the beginning. And we've been, I've been in, we lived in Madison a while, and then moved to Morristown. But Madison is where I, that's how I became a New Jersey resident. Anyhow, I certainly want to thank the Borough for doing this proclamation, and we want to invite everyone here on Sunday to the Green about 3:30. We're gonna have a little celebration, then we're gonna go across the street to the Iron Bar and really celebrate. So anyone wants to attend, join us, celebrate with us. So this Sunday, the 16th, 3:30 on the Green, 4:00, we'll be at the Iron Bar. Thank you again.
Mary Robinson, come on up. Another special proclamation to present to Mary, who has been recognized as a CNN hero, but she is truly a Madison hero. Coming, you know, you lost your father at a young age, and I, as I was preparing this proclamation, I thought about my mother passing away 42 years ago. I was already out of the house, but four of the 11 Conley children were still at home, ranging from age of 12 to 17, trying to, you know, grasp the loss of our mother, who was truly the rock of, you know, she was an amazing person to keep us 11 kids all the right spots. So this is such an important program you have put together. Let me share this proclamation. Whereas Imagine, a center for coping with loss, is a grief support center for children founded by Madison resident Mary Robinson, who lost her father while a student at Madison High School, has worked and volunteered in the field of children's grief support since 1997. And whereas, providing free year-round grief support to children, young adults, parents, and bereaved children, the nonprofit uses a peer support group model with trained adult volunteers and professionals committed to providing children and teens with the comfort and tools needed to learn to process grief and grow, grow up emotionally and healthy. And whereas, with locations in Mountainside and Newark, Imagine also provides education in the community by leading workshops in schools and workplaces, and offering onsite support in schools and workplaces following any traumatic loss. And whereas, Imagine, founded in 2011 when Mary was invited to open a grief support center by Dr. Gerald Glasser, who provided initial grant for startup funding and continues to provide annual support to the Glasser Foundation, which was set up in memory of his son, Thomas Glasser, victim of the 9/11 terror attack, to ensure that no child should ever have to grieve alone. And whereas, founder and executive director of Imagine, Mary Robinson, was recently selected as a CNN hero. A campaign since 2007 has received over 85,000 nominations and profiled more than 300 everyday people changing the world, who are honored for their selfless and creative efforts to help others. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor, Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby extend congratulations to Mary Robinson as recipient of the CNN Hero Award, and express our gratitude, appreciation for her dedication and commitment, as well as serving as an inspiration and hero to all of us here in Madison. Thank you, Mary, so much.
So thank you to the council, and also to the town of Madison. I grew up here, and I also live here now, for which I'm really, really grateful. It's a beloved community to me, and it's a town that really took care of my family after my dad died. I don't know what we would have done without our friends and neighbors and members of St. Vincent's, who all stepped up to help my mom, who is an extraordinarily resilient mother and person, definitely my hero. And I'm very grateful for this acknowledgement. Childhood bereavement is a serious and prevalent public health issue. Kids in grief are at risk for unhealthy and destructive ways of coping with loss. Forty-five years ago, when my dad died, there was no support for kids, but unfortunately, we've come a long way, and now there is support. In New Jersey alone, there's over 114,000 bereaved youth, age zero to 18, right now. And so we're trying to get the message out, that if you know a child who's had a loss of any kind, to show up and listen to them, and support them, and be there for them. So thank you again for this acknowledgement. I love Madison so much.
Finance Borough Clerk, Council President Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. From the clerk's office, in anticipation of the June 2nd primary election, the filing deadline for nomination petitions for county committee member, as well as municipal offices, is March 30th, 2020. Forms are available in the Borough Clerk's office. Voter registration forms, as well as mail-in ballot applications, are also available in the Borough Clerk's office, or online at morriselections.org. Reminder, pet licenses are due before February 29th. Fifteen annual fee need to date rabies vaccine. Call the clerk's office for more information. From the Finance Department, this evening, the council and the public will hear our first report on the municipal budget. We've already received reports and discussed capital needs, the Open Space Trust Fund, and the water and electric utilities. This evening's report will focus on the appropriations or expense side of the budget, as well as the municipal surplus. We'll hear from our department heads on February 24th. On March 2nd, we will have special budget hearing, where we will discuss the revenue side of the budget, as well as the strategic planning guidelines and alternate budget format. Residents interested in learning more about the budget are encouraged to visit the annual budget process page on RoseNet. From the Utility Billing Department, utility billing department will soon start training on the new online payment platform, iCloud. The system is expected to be up and running in about six weeks. Once operational, customers will be able to set up the scheduled payments and automated payments, creating payment plans, view your payment history, select paperless billing, store your credit card information and banking information on the system, so you can easily pay by credit card or ACH. And you can also get text alerts when a bill is due and authorized payment via text. The current MyGovHub system will be shut down at the end of March. Anyone with questions should contact the Utility Billing Department. From the Meter Reading Department, this week, the electric utility, construction official, and meter reading staff will be meeting with our consultants to install the four gatekeeper units throughout town. These uses will collect meter reads for electric utility customers that have our new upgraded meters. There are over 2,000 electric meters and 500 water modules that were already installed. Once operational, these four collectors will be able to automatically read the new electric meters and water modules. This will give the meter reading staff even more time to install the new meters in the rest of the town. Next month, the Chief Financial Officer will give a presentation to the council detailing what the system will do. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Public Safety, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Police Department, on January 30th, Sergeant James Kvezic graduated from the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police Command and Leadership Academy. In recognizing the challenges in law enforcement, this agency, this academy, made a commitment to be in the forefront of innovation and change, and created this challenging program which develops future police leaders. Its curriculum was developed in collaboration with the United States Military Academy at West Point. The instructors are highly experienced law enforcement practitioners and specialists with intensive backgrounds in the criminal justice system. And we had a retirement on Monday, February 10th. Sergeant Ed Mitchko officially retired from the Police Department. He was born and raised in the town of Booton, and is now a current resident of Florham Park. And he joined the Police Department in 1995, after attending Morris County's 45th Basic Police Training Academy as an alternate roof cadet. He graduated from Morris County College with associate degrees in criminal justice and business administration. And on our Police Department, he served as patrol officer, detective, juvenile officer, and patrol sergeant within the department. We appreciate his dedication and his service, and congratulate him on his retirement. The Police Department will be conducting their mandatory firearms training and qualifications at the John Avenue Training Facility. Residents should not be alarmed if they hear gunshots in this area. Firearms training is required by the New Jersey State Attorney General Guidelines. And our Police Department is, believes very strongly in training, and we've had a number of officers attending reasonable suspicion training, command leadership institute, juvenile detention, alternative initiatives, firearms law and applicant investigations, interview and interrogations, after-school sports and event security, and local gangs, and trends in training. So that's from the Police Department. For the Fire Department, during the month of January, the Fire Department responded to a number of alarms, 16 general alarms, 15 still alarms, 36 investigations, 30 medical calls, and they had 35 fire prevention inspections, and 22 smoke CO resale inspections were made. There were two department drills held in January, and the Fire Department hosted a fire safety luncheon for our senior citizens at the Fire Department on Thursday, January 24th. And fire safety presentations and a tour of the headquarters were given. And again, on Tuesday, January 21st, and Thursday, the 27th, the Fire Department conducted tours for special needs children and adults from the Education Careers and Lifelong Community Group from Chatham. On Thursday, January 30th, firefighters Evan Webb, Byram Castano, and San Diego Lopez attended a three-hour rope awareness class hosted by the Parsipati Fire Department. The Fire Department is in need of volunteer firefighters, so if you are interested, please go to www.madisonfd.com, and you can find more information on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. From Engineering and Public Work, the Engineering Department is in the process of setting things up, so that when the spring comes, we can, we can pull it, set all the road improvement projects going. The 2020 Route Improvements, Albright Circle and Beverly Road, are being advertised with a scheduled opening on March 19th. Glenwell Road is advertised, also with a scheduled opening for March 19th. DPW, the Recycling Center, continues to be improved. There is... There is, the Police Range Building is advertised with a scheduled opening on February 27th. The Dodge Field Playground Buildings will also be advertised within the next 30 days. And sometime in the next month or so, the fence for the dog park will be installed by GM Fence. Department of Public Works continues to maintain our fleet of vehicles and our property as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. The seniors, the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, has developed with NorwestCAP, a flyer to advertise the Telephone Reassurance and Friendly Visitor Programs, with the objectives of increasing the number of people taking advantage of the programs, adding volunteers to the program. We enlisted a new caller this past week, a resident of Rexford Tucker. And the citizens of Madison are under utilizing the program at this time, and we'd like to have more of them participate. And communication and orientation to the program is meant to increase such utilization. It is estimated 35% of the people over 60 years old in Morris County live alone. Interesting. For the 13th of February, meeting of the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, we have a lunch, provided by Pine Acres, in which the staff from Representative Mikey Sherrill's office will be there for two hours to answer questions and take case information about social security, veterans' benefits, income taxes, Medicare and Medicaid. The lunch has been bringing more people to remain for the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee meeting that follows. We now have three sponsors that are going to donate food for such lunches, so we hope to have a lunch prior to every Senior Citizens Advisory Committee meeting this year, working to get as many people at SCAC meetings as possible. In conjunction with the Environmental Commission, a t-shirt shopping bag sewing session was held at the Senior Center, in anticipation of the plastic bag ordinance initiation. In conjunction with the Madison and Chatham's Environmental Commissions, and the Chatham Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, which is recently and newly established, a team with the Madison SCAC is going to assess, rather, establishing a repair cafe, a program that assists people with fixing household appliances, computers, et cetera, through having seniors do both the repairs and have their items repaired. Summit has a successful program, and they have agreed to help us think this through the process and assess the feasibility. The Chamber of Commerce, The Taste of Madison is Monday, March 23rd, at the Brook Lake Country Club. The committee is still seeking sponsorships. Please contact Karen Giambra or Michael Pelissier for more information. Tickets are currently for pre-sale at the tasteofmadison.org or at Gary's Wine and Marketplace. In the Madison Community Arts Center, all three performances this past weekend were very successful. The Friday fundraiser for the Arts Center sold out and had a few walk-ups as well. Next performance is the Rio Clemente Concert on February 17th, receiving outside marketing support from the New Jersey Jazz Society. The Madison Arts and Cultural Alliance received a $45,000 grant from the Smart Family Foundation for a capital purchase of lighting equipment at the Arts Center. This is the first of solicited funds to provide theatrics to the Arts Center, that is grid, sound and lights, to fulfill the goal of making the center a multipurpose visual and performing arts venue for the borough. New pre-summer concert series is slated to open Friday, May 1st, outside on the outdoor stage of the Arts Center. The first artist will be Chatham Big Band. Subsequent concerts are planned for May 15th, 29th, and June 12th. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Health, Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. The Madison Board of Health was contacted late last Friday by the Center for Disease Control, that a Madison resident, who had recently returned from a business trip to China, needed to be checked out for signs of the coronavirus. Health Officer Mike Fitzpatrick was able to track down our resident and confirm that the Madison resident had traveled weeks ago to China, which far exceeded the 14-day incubation period, and there was no further action required. The Health Department does encourage all residents to get flu shots to avoid the flu, which is still active and is more prevalent in our area than the coronavirus. The Health Department does have flu vaccinations still available. To date, there are only three reported cases of possible coronavirus in the entire state of New Jersey, none in Morris County. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Utilities, Ms. Ehrlich.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the last two weekends, the standby crew was called out from the Electric Department three times for partial or no power calls. In each case, power was restored within one hour. Permanent repairs are ongoing from the tornado damage last fall. The Electrical Department recently completed another pole replacement. System upgrades and scheduled maintenance activities are ongoing to maintain our electrical infrastructure in a state of good repair. Both the Water Department and the Electrical Department participated in safety and rescue training courses over the last two weeks. These included confined space rescue, as well as water disinfection and safe handling. That's my report.
Thank you. Communications and Petitions.
Yes, Mayor. Council has received several emails, both in support of the tree protection ordinance and opposing the tree protection.
Thank you. And now we're on to our first of two invitations for discussion. This is limited to items on our agenda discussion and also resolutions. So, our agenda discussion tonight, we have a budget hearing, which will include the Police Department and a presentation of the draft budget, and then a further discussion on the plastic bag ordinance. The following resolutions are on the consent agenda, so you can comment on these in this period, and also you'll know what the consent agenda consists of. Resolution 71, extending the preventive maintenance repair contract for HVAC equipment contract to air systems. R 72 is awarding contract to Denville Line striping for, striping work under the Morris County Co-op, not to exceed $30,000, funded through Ordinance 2, 2020. Resolution 73 is also a county co-op contract to Shifano Construction for paving improvements, not to exceed $620,000, also funded under Ordinance 2, 2020. Resolution R 74 is awarding contract to MicroPave Systems for crack sealing under the Morris County Co-op, not to exceed $50,000, funded under Ordinance 2. Resolution 75 is curb replacement improvements under the Morris County Co-op to Cefalie and Sun, not to exceed $30,000, funded on Ordinance 2. The Resolution 76 authorizing purchase of mobile data terminals and accessories for the Police and Fire Departments through New Jersey Co-op Pricing System, funded through operating account, and not to exceed $57,858, $50,858. Resolution 77, authorizing clothing donation bin at the Rose City Plaza, which is the stop and shop. Resolution 78 is authorizing shared service agreement with the Township of Berkeley Heights to provide IT technical services. This is not to exceed 20 hours per month, nor 250 hours annually, at a rate of 83/23. Resolution 79 approving a John Henry Perkins trust disbursement, up to amount of $5,000 to support a family in need. Resolution 80 is authorizing special event permit to allow the use of Summer Hill Park by the Boy Scouts of America, Patriots Pack, Patriots Pack 124, for an overnight camping event on June 6th and 7th. Resolution 81 is also for Boy Scout Troop 7, overnight camping event, May 1st at James Park, and a multi-unit camp area at Summer Hill Park on June 20, 21. And then we already did Resolution 82, which was the celebration of the 100th anniversary of Women's Suffrage. Resolution 83 is authorizing a contract with Clark Caten Hints for professional services regarding the Masonic Lodge Temple, for a work related to a historic grant, not to exceed $6,470, and this will be funded either through Open Space or other account deemed appropriate by the CFO. Resolution 84, appointing Francis Bortman to position Administrative Secretary of Utility Advisory Committee, for a stipend of $1,125 for 2020. So, those are the resolutions to be comment on, or the two agenda items. I know some people are here that would like to comment on the tree protection ordinance. That will come in the next comment period. We anticipate that not to be too late, because our two agenda discussions are fairly short. So, please step up to the lectern, state the agenda item or the resolution you're commenting on, state your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard, and try to keep your comments to three minutes, but I'll give you one-minute grace period, close you at four minutes.
Richard Zipper, 197 Greenwood. I want to thank the council for the resolutions allowing the Boy Scouts to camp at Summer Hill Park. These troops that will be camping and packs are all Madison troops. We're trying something a little different this year. We've been maintaining James Park for 20 or more years on May Day. So, this year, we're going to do something a little special. We're going to camp out at James Park the night before May Day, Friday night, and then we're going to get up in the morning, we're going to make a big pancake breakfast for the Boy Scouts and their parents, who help us every year maintaining the park. Something a little special to enjoy all the work that they've been doing over so many years. And I'd like to thank the council for the resolution.
Thank you very much. And I saw the application for James Park, and it sounds like a neat idea, so that's a great thing. Anyone else wishing to comment on any resolutions or the agenda items, please step forward.
I have a comment on electric rates as relates to the budget discussion. Would that be an appropriate time to talk about it now?
On?
Budget, draft budget discussion?
Yep.
I just want to make sure we're here at the right time. Johanna Habib, 198 Central Avenue. The topic I wanted to talk about was electric rates, specifically the possibility of the school district paying less for electric. I just want to remind folks, I'm no longer on the Board of Ed. My term is over, and I have not coordinated any of these comments with anyone on the Board of Ed or in the administration. I'm here strictly as a taxpayer, a 19-year resident and a parent of two children in the school district, or once graduated. Thank you to Jim for his presentation. I did read it online. I'm one of the people that always reads them online, and I appreciate the work that goes into them. If I understand correctly, the electric utility generated about 7% more surplus than expected in 2019, and the total surplus balance at the end of fiscal year 19 is just under $10 million. And so, I'm quoting the presentation, this is an indicator that the utility is in a good financial position. And so, given that excellent financial standing, I would like to ask the Borough Council to consider, as part of its budget discussion, whether this is a time they can give additional relief to the school district on the cost of electricity. If you look at district expenditures on electric, they used to be well over $400,000. They're now in the mid-300s, mostly because of the dividend that you all generously approve every year, and we benefit from that as well. But the rates are trickling, the costs are trickling up, because we have a lot more air-conditioned space than we used to, and a lot more space than we used to in our district. And the costs take a lot of money out of the budget. I know I was surprised to learn a few years ago that the district pays a retail rate for electric. I don't know if even all the council members do understand that, but we, the district, pays a residential rate for most of its buildings, and then a, I guess it's a commercial rate for the five schools. But I would contend that the school district is unique. It's a public government entity that is entirely funded by the taxpayer, whether at the local, state, or federal level. Less than 1% of its revenues come from funds out of taxpayer-related sources. And so, it seems appropriate to me, as a parent, that the district should pay for the cost of their electric, but not more. I know from sitting through previous presentations and reading previous presentations, that the borough sees the utility as a valuable resource and an important revenue stream, and is committed to the current model of using the utility surplus for tax relief on the municipal budget. And I'm not here to debate that. I accept that as is. But the school district should not be contributing to the surplus. It makes no sense for a taxpayer to send dollars to the school district, which are then paid to the borough, some of which end up in surplus and are returned to the taxpayer as tax relief. It's a highly inefficient process, and it's not very transparent, and it takes money out of the budget that the school district needs for other needs. If Madison didn't have our own electric utility, the school district would participate with 430 other school districts in the ACES program, and they would buy their electricity as part of a co-op and wholesale. And the cost of that electricity, the last time I checked, was around eight and a half cents a kilowatt hour. The district currently pays around 14 to 15 cents an hour, kilowatt hour, inclusive of the demand charges. And on some of the buildings, they pay as high as 18 and a half cents. So, by my rough estimate, and I don't have a perfect estimate, that's about $100,000 more than they would be paying if they were in the ACES program. And so, while we regard the utility as an advantage in our town to the district, it's a financial penalty. And so, I would just reiterate, I'm not asking for the school district to relieve the electric for free. I'm asking for them to be charged what is fair.
Time, Joanne.
And to cover their costs in full, but not more. Anyone who's attended a board meeting recently knows how tight the school district budget is. I'm finishing, and so...
Ma'am, your time's up. I had to stop you at four minutes, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you for, and the council will take that into consideration, and we did a few years ago, put all the rates together for a blended rate, so it's at a, not a residential rate, but at one of the lower commercial rates. But we certainly have a strong working relationship with the Board of Education through, help through the pilot and other things, and will continue to look at these opportunities. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on agenda items or resolutions, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to our agenda discussions. Budget hearing with our Police Department presentation and draft budget. CFO and Chief.
Just going to get the chief set up here. That's a quick agenda, and then I'm going to flip right to the chief, start off the chief. Answer that. I'll see if he has any tech on.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, administration. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to give you a brief overview of the Madison Police Department and my 2020 operating budget. Great picture, isn't it? That's our ESU truck on September 11th. So, as you know, we have a proud history of serving our community since 1890. I like to throw it out there every opportunity I get, because we are very proud of our history of serving our community. As you know, the Police Department is comprised of three major divisions, the Patrol, Investigative, and Support Services. The Patrol Division is a backbone of our agency. Those are the men and women on our streets that answer our calls for service. We have a total of 85 employees and personnel, that ranging from sworn officers to civilian employees, non-sworn dispatchers, school guards, and auxiliary officers. This next slide depicts our line of authority. It's our table of organization. Once again, it's a line of authority from the chief on down. It shows our span of control for all of our supervisors. So, next few slides are just going to deal with some of our annual statistics. They remained relatively stable in most areas. As you can see, the first area, calls for service, this is anything that our officers are dispatched to take care of. That area is down about 5.3%. Motor vehicle stops is up 4.8%. Crash investigations is up 7.5%. We're not sure why that's increasing, but I have my suspicions that it's just technology in attentive driving. As we all know, everyone's on their cellphone nowadays, but I believe that's why those crash investigations are on the rise. Traffic tickets are also up 11.5%. And our last line here, parking summons, is, I just want to explain how that number increased to over 4,400. Prior to 2019, we had two systems. Our patrol officers would write tickets on the e-ticketing system, while our parking enforcement officer had to handwrite them. In 2019, she went on to the e-ticketing system, which makes writing summonses more efficient. So, those two numbers are combined, so that accounts for that jump in summonses. The next slide, one area I want to show is the burglaries, how it jumped 112% from 16 to 34 burglaries in 2019. A large portion of these burglaries deal with motor vehicle burglaries. I can't stress enough to our residents, the need to lock vehicles. This is not unique to Madison, but this is a statewide problem, where carloads of criminals come into an area and just flood a neighborhood looking for easy targets, basically unlocked vehicles. So, that is the reason why that number has jumped so much in 2019. So that is the reason why that number has jumped so much in 2019. Excuse me. So one area I want to explain is our overtime. Our overtime went up a little bit in, well, about 31% in 2019. Some of the reasons for this jump in our overtime budget was I had two officers on military deployment, one on family leave and one officer that was injured. So those shifts have to be covered via overtime. Also, our medication destruction, although it went down in 2019, we're up to over two tons of medication that's been collected at the Police Department. I pride our department as being a community-oriented police department. These are some of the programs that we conduct year to year. I'm proud to say, the lower left, it was our re-establishment of the National Night Out, which we will have again this year. So on to our 2019 accomplishments. We entered into a shared service agreement with the Morris County Communication Center for 911 answering. This has been a seamless endeavor where the county will answer our 911 calls, which saved Madison Borough taxpayer hundreds of thousands of dollars in order to upgrade our equipment. Like I said, it's been seamless, there's been no lag time in response for Madison officers. As you heard, we improved parking enforcement applications through the use of Boxcar. And as you just heard, we instituted the e-ticketing system for our parking enforcement officer. This makes her job more efficient. She basically can virtual chalk tires driving down Main Street through the use of the ALPR. It's the Automatic License Plate Recognition System and GPS. We upgraded our communications desk, upgrading our technologies and software. Our medication return policy, I just touched on that, we're over two tons of medication collected at the Police Department. And we just conducted a full audit of our evidence room and we're in 100% compliance. And that was over 5,000 items of evidence that were accounted for. We also introduced two hybrid police vehicles. We should be taking delivery of these vehicles in the very near future. This is going to lower our fuel costs and also our carbon footprint. Lastly, we started the install of LED lighting throughout Police and Fire Headquarters, which is going to reduce our energy consumption. Our 2020 goals, accreditation reassessment. This is a three-year cycle and on February 17th, we will have representatives from the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police verifying that we have been operating in compliance with the set standards. We plan to complete our training center. I understand that a bridge went out and we hope to have that project completed by the summer. It's been delayed due to DEP permitting issues and building placement, but that project should be completed by the end of the year. I would like to fill a vacancy in Detective Bureau and also establish a promotional exam for the rank of Lieutenant, Sergeant, or, I'm sorry, Sergeant, Lieutenant, and Captain. I would also like to add a second officer to the Traffic Safety Bureau. And the next one, I think, is the most important on our list, is help Madison maintain the number-one status of the best place to live. I think this is a direct result of the hard work of the men and women of the Madison Police Department, which give our residents a safe community to live in. And lastly, increase the number of cameras and automatic license plate readers points throughout town. The Madison Police Department operates under Budget 25-240. This budget for 2020 is being presented to you rather flat outside of the contractual obligations that were agreed to under the collective bargaining unit. 240 deals with equipment, associated maintenance, vehicle purchases, supplies, training, vehicle maintenance under 316, and emergency management under Operating Budget 252. My last slide here depicts my capital improvement five-year plan. This year, I'm asking for $10,000 to assist with body armor replacement. These funds will also, application will be submitted to help offset through federal grants. $50,000 for a parking shelter. What this will do is it's going to shield our police vehicles, which, as you know, house a multitude, thousands and thousands of dollars' worth of equipment. Sometimes in the summertime, the heat on the vehicles, it's damaging our electronic equipment. And also in the wintertime, sometimes we have large storms, we have to have our officers come in off the road to clear cars and to move them for plowing. So this shelter will protect our vehicles and keep our assets on the road where they belong. And lastly, $10,000 to replace protective equipment such as helmets and gas masks. That's it.
Questions?
Any questions?
Chief, comments? Thank you for all you do and your great leadership. As you pointed out, you have a key role in making us the number-one place to live in the state and we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Now we'll let you get home.
Okay, Mayor, before we start, I'd like to take, just tell one little story about Sal Luciana, because I've worked with him for many years as Main Street Executive Director and he always expresses strong opinions about very many things. And I can remember one day walking down the street and Sal came up to me and he went like this. And I said, "Wow, Sal, is everything okay?" And he came to her and goes, "No, I have three problems I want to talk to you about." That was Sal.
Definitely.
So, I'm going to bypass a number of these slides because they've been presented to council before. They're really inserted into the deck purely in case residents happen to be flipping through the slide decks. Also, as council knows, these slides are not made for optimum presentation, but more in case someone wants to actually read from them. So there's a little more text than normal, what you would find in a slide. Transparency, all the information is available on RoseNet on the Annual Budget Process page. This is the hearing schedule, which Councilwoman Vitale talked about. We'll have Department of Presentations on February 24th, March 2nd, the Revised Budget Presentation, which is a special meeting. And then March 30th, we'll have another budget hearing. And then hopefully April 27th, the adoption. I'm just going to flip through these slides. Residents can see this at home if they want to. It just talks about some of the structural ways that we have council look at the budget and how we go through the process of developing the budget. The main takeaway from the budget this evening that I want to point out is that there are two major expenses that are driving the budget this year. One is the cost for the police and fire going up by $278,000. Darren is right, certain lines are flat. However, the contractual obligations within the salaries of the collective bargaining are very significant and the pension costs are very significant. So those costs are going up $278,000 and the garbage and recycling costs are going up $322,000. By way of comparison, a 2% property tax increase would generate $294,000. So right off the bat, just with those two, or those three expense lines, we're already kind of behind by over $300,000. So I'd like to talk this evening about the appropriation side of the budget. This document's called the Budget in Brief. It has revenue on the top and appropriations on the bottom. We'll talk about some of the changes that happened on appropriations from 2019 to 2020 as we developed this budget. And so we'll focus on this bottom section. First, I just want to say what this budget does include, because there are many good things in this budget. As a CFO, I always have to show the challenges, but I also want to talk about the good things. There's no change in service to the residents. We have funding for one additional Public Works employee and one additional water utility employee. And there are funds also to hire a recycling monitor. As mentioned earlier this evening, a new recycling center is going to be opening that we want to have expanded hours at the new center so residents can take full advantage of the facility and businesses as well. We have funds to hire three police officers in August to replace officers that will be on the books but be retiring. So those officers may be on the books through the end of the year, but we have the ability, if council wants to, to hire three new officers halfway through the year. There's extra funds for recreation field improvements, extra dollars for the planning budget for a master plan update, and an aggressive capital improvement plan. So jumping into the budget, this is the bottom section of that document we saw earlier. I'm just highlighting the waste removal line, which you can see is up $322,000. Much of that is due to the hauling of the garbage being driven to the tipping station, as well as the hauling of the recycling materials and having to pay to dispose of the recycling materials. We always had to pay a little bit to get rid of commingled and always got money back in cardboard, but that's not the case anymore. The recycling markets have really changed significantly and we are no longer getting revenue from those lines, so we actually have to pay to get rid of recyclable material. Much less than the $100 we pay per ton for garbage, but still we have to pay. So that line is going up $322,000 in the budget. It's actually going up a little more in terms of costs, but we had a little bit extra in that line, so it didn't have to go up all the way. The library's budget this year went up by $47,000 and it's gone up $144,000 over two years. The library's budget is basically the mill rate. It's one-third of a point on the equalized assessed value for that particular year. When the assessed values go up, the amount of money they get goes up automatically. The library gets the mill rate and then they get $100,000 additional to help them with their utility, to help them with their utility budget. So that, over two years, was a significant, from a percentage standpoint, increase. And that's line B27 there. The capital improvement fund, a number of years ago, we had a very small capital program. Now, we have worked on a very robust one over a number of years and we think we can, in order to help this budget, ratchet back on the amount of money that's being put from this budget into the capital improvement fund by $300,000. This doesn't change what we'll do in terms of the capital program, but it's just we don't have to put that much into the capital improvement fund itself from the municipal operating budget. So that's a way that we're offsetting those increasing costs on the other side from the police and from the garbage. This is the first year that I separated out salary and wages for police and fire and salary wages for all of the municipal employees. Not utility employees, just municipal employees. And you can see how that line went up, $196,000 for police and fire. That's just salary and wages, that's not benefit load, that's not pension or anything else. And that, all other municipal employees actually went down $151,000. And we'll talk about that a little bit more later. Department operating expenses went up $173,000, but they went up because of, primarily because we've entered into a contract to have a portion of our Health Department, a greater portion of our Health Department done by Bloomfield and taken care of by Bloomfield. Ben Samara retired, Joanne Grillo retired. Those two employees were paid salary employees up on the higher line. Now they're contract employees being paid through a contract. So that's why you see almost an exact difference between a drop in salary and wages for all municipal employees and an increase in operating. That's predominantly what happened there. I'm going to go very quickly through this. This is on RoseNet, the employees' payroll earnings. People should understand that employees like the police, police in particular, have the ability to earn revenue outside of the budget through the Joint Court, which is paid for by multiple towns, or through outside duty paid for by PSENG or through capital. An example is Officer Bart Glab, who earned, he really worked a lot of hours this year. He's got a young family. I know he's trying to make a lot of money. He ended up earning over $50,000 in additional funds, in outside duty funds. So he was, he was here all the time. I don't know when he got home. Literally worked like 16 hours a week in addition to his regular shift. So that's why he is where he is on that scale. But that's just an explanation, that's not all of his salaries. This does show the department appropriations. We take a benefit load and apply it to the salaries. We don't sit there and calculate each employee's health, specific health costs and pension costs. We do it on a load basis across all the departments. This doesn't change in terms of our top six largest department or cost areas, police, Public Works, Fire, Garbage and Recycling, Library, and Sewage, but it just gives you an idea of the scope of each of the departments. This chart does the same thing, gives you an idea of the scope of each of the departments. Some of the departments, such as the Health Department, Construction, and Court are net of shared service revenues that are coming in. So you can see the Court, if you look at the line, $160,000. Clearly, our Court costs a lot more than that, but we have other towns paying into that. So that gives you just a concept of the scale of the Police Department being almost 28% of the total budget as compared to other departments. Pension costs are another item that are increasing. And even though in the budget, we've actually separated out the police and fire pension and, well, we haven't separated it out, but what you can see is that it's gone up significantly over a number of years. In our, in the budget summary, we have merged together, it's going up $62,000. But here you can see over a three-year period, the police and fire pensions costs have gone up over $226,000. All other public employees have only, have actually gone down. So, and this gives you an indication as to how much the cost per employee is. This is what the Borough is paying. Employees are also paying into the pension system as well. So it just gives you an indication as to how much we pay in police and fire pension costs and in public employee pension costs. And that's just some additional text. Police and fire are much more expensive because an officer can retire and immediately collect their benefit. Other employees have to, in the regular pension system, have to wait until they're 60. An officer can retire at, can be hired at 22, work for 25 years until they're 47, retire and immediately draw their pension at age 47. You can't do that in the regular public employee system. Health insurance, that gives you an idea of our cost. In 2019, 110 employees in the system, approximately $22,000 per employee. And that 2.4 million is funded across both utilities, the library, and the municipal budget. This is employee gross earnings by department and this includes gross earnings and includes overtime and standby and things like that. So the, if you were to take the average of a firefighter and then add what we talked about earlier, which is $20,000 in health insurance and $30,000 in a pension cost and then a few other small items like unemployment, the cost for a firefighter at top of the scale is $188,000, which is a significant cost. But they obviously perform an important duty to the Borough, but as CFO, I just want to bring that to your attention. This is a four-year trend of department appropriations. I'm not going to go over it in detail, just noting that the Police Department is a significant, has had an over-million-dollar increase over four years. We can certainly talk about that more later if you wish. I'm not going to read this. This is for people at home who want to learn more about surplus. Council has seen this slide many, many times. It explains how surplus is generated. In terms of municipal surplus, if I, if Pat Rowe had taken that bet with me, he would have won, but he didn't, that's okay. Very, very small incremental increase over last year. I thought it was going to go down. This year, the amount of surplus we generate in 2020 versus the amount we use in the municipal budget, the total balance of surplus will definitely drop. So hopefully he'll want to bet me this year on that. In any event, surplus is an important indicator of the relative strength of the municipality financially and I think we're in good shape here. However, we know that there are some major expenses out there, specifically affordable housing and others, that are significant unknowns. The strategic planning guidelines do ask that we work this number down. I was explaining to Councilwoman Ehrlich earlier today, it's kind of like landing a spaceship on the moon and I can touch the controls for one minute and then I just have to see where it goes from there. And that's what we do. We touch the controls when we set the budget and then the year happens and we may generate more surplus or less depending on how the department has spent. Do we have any major snowstorms or issues that we had to deal with? Did construction generate a lot of extra revenue this year or not? So this is always good for residents to see, so I'm going to read this real briefly. The average home valued at $667,000, which is about the average house in town, that's from an assessed value standpoint, pays $13,163 in 2019 property taxes. The municipal portion is just $2,888 and they get all these different services, plowed roads, recreation. all these different services, plowed roads, recreation, sewage treatment, seniors, fire, garbage, police, yard waste, health administration, public library and alike. So, that's, that's important for the residents to understand what they're getting. I do want to point out that since two thousand fourteen, in total, the municipal taxes on that home, this is that fictitious home, that, it's not a fictitious home, it's a real home, have gone up only eighty-six dollars from two thousand thirteen to two thousand nineteen. And this shows the percentage increase by year of taxes on that particular home. So, we've, certainly, the governing body has, has done, has been very austere and done over the years and done whatever they could to keep property taxes down. But, this year, given the increase in expenses, we do need to have a property tax increase. So, as I said, the main takeaway is the expenses and the fact that we can only raise two percent in property taxes only gets us to two hundred and ninety-four thousand. As such, I'd just like to say one more main takeaway, which is the future of the electric markets is uncertain. Administration believes that the borough should take stronger steps to reduce our reliance on the electric utility surplus over the coming years. Also, certain expenses such as PERS, health insurance and others have been flat, but could go up over the coming years. The most logical and sustainable options for the future would be to consider a water rate increase and continued small incremental property tax increases. I also did come up with another strategy after I wrote this slide down. It's a ways off, but I, I'd love to, and I will continue to preach this. In two thousand and twenty-nine, our major bond that we issued for the renovation of this building, for public safety and for the fire truck will be complete and our debt service will drop significantly. It's two thousand and twenty-nine. It's a ways off, but that would be a great way at that time, if we don't load up on additional debt beyond the joint meeting, to, to potentially use that as, as a time to say, if we keep our debt down, we can really reduce our reliance of electric utility in, in a very swift way that year. So, that's something, it's way far out. We'll keep talking about it, but that's, that's a certain strategy that we could, we could work with. So, I went over three minutes, Mayor. I'm sorry.
It was, it was exactly three minutes.
Yeah. It's an interesting math you have, Mayor.
Yes. Okay. Questions and comments? Yep?
All right. I have several questions, starting with the department appropriations. You have construction with the asterisk indicating that it's the number of a net share. Who else do we, who do we get money from for construction?
Chatham Borough.
Okay. And then, on the pension costs and health insurance, do we know, or do you know off the top of your head what the percentage, what would an officer contribute versus a department head for both pension and healthcare, either percentage-wise?
Sure. So, an employee that has a family that's at the top of the scale, like a department head salary or a top police officer, a top firefighter, will pay over ten thousand dollars of their salary towards their health insurance. So, that hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars we saw for the firefighter, ten thousand dollars is going towards health insurance. Another ten thousand dollars for that firefighter or for a department head is going to their pension. Even though the police and fire and public employees pension systems are different, the amount that the employees contribute is about the same. So, a department head will pay, or a firefighter, a top pay will pay twenty thousand dollars of their own money into the system. That's in addition to what you saw there. So, PERS is ten thousand dollars for the borough, ten thousand dollars contribution from the employee, for a total of twenty thousand dollars for an employee at top pay. For a firefighter, it, at top pay, it's thirty thousand dollars that the borough is paying into the system and another ten thousand dollars that the firefighter is paying into the system. So, talking to other people who pay health insurance other than teachers, it's a significant amount that the borough employees pay into that.
It'd be nice if they put us back with the borough employees, but. And then, the last thing is on your slide about the municipal property tax and what you're recommending. My two cents, which I'm sure we'll discuss more as a council, is the possibility, you asked for two-point-nine-five percent. I want to maintain services because we have great services and the electric dividend, which I don't think we talked about tonight at all, but I personally would like to see that come down to two-and-a-half percent if possible. I think two-point-nine-five, looking at what we've done the past six years, is a big jump for residents. And if it's necessary and can be justified, you know, that's fine, but I'd like to see if we could bring it down a little bit. Thank you.
Other? Carmella and then Austria next.
Deb, I'm gonna, I'm gonna act, I am going to agree with you. Isn't that great? We, we had this conversation, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, Jim, about the two-point-nine. And I and Austria had talked about it and Maureen, we would like to see that number come down, okay? And I, I really want to keep on encouraging the council to reduce that reliance on the electric utility surplus over the coming years. And I think you almost kind of did it because we were at twenty-eight percent and I think this, this budget is showing some, somewhere around twenty-five percent. Is that correct?
Not exactly.
Not exactly?
Not exactly.
Okay. Is it still up there?
It's, it's, it's still up there. It is a number that we want to continue to work on. The majority of the strategic planning guidelines, we are in line with, but that is something, as I pointed out at the end, I want, and you pointed out, I just want to continue to work on that. And there's multiple ways to work on that structurally and I think incrementally and then possibly in two thousand and twenty-nine, we can have one really significant.
Yeah. And I, and I think that you, you talked about the most logical way to do it is to consider the water rate increase. And I know people don't like water rate increases, but we talked about very small ones. I, I sat on this council when we were forced to make a twenty-five percent increase in the water rate and we were still the lowest in the entire area. So, that would give us reliability of taking more surplus out of that water utility and less from the electric utility. So, I, I like the, the thoughts about that. I'll have a lot of questions. You know, I came off like a week's vacation, so I'm sure I'll be talking to you, but for the most part, it looks good. I mean, you know, we, we have some problems and we have some increases that were totally unexpected this year. So, we appreciate the work that you, the hard work that you guys did, you know, with the garbage and the recycling, because that was a tough one for this year. And it was much higher when we started. So, that was a good job to get it down to what we are gonna be paying.
Austria?
She said everything.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. But, I was gonna mention the garbage and recycling contract really hit us hard this year, but I, I do think that we should find a way to decrease that number of tax numbers and we'll work on that.
Other comments or questions, John?
I may have been asleep at the switch when this was discussed or whatever, but you have, what this budget includes and you've got one additional public works employee, an additional water utility employee and funds to hire recycling monitor. And I just really would like to know and understand if you, if you don't mind repeating, if you've told me already, what the justification for those increases in staff are?
It's actually replacement of employees that had retired but had not been hired.
This says one additional public work.
Correct. So, for the last two years, we've had employee, Bo Cirillo, the position that Bo Cirillo had, has not been filled. So, we could call it a new employee or we could call it filling a, a long vacancy. So, it's probably better to say that. In terms of the water, there's been discussion about the need to hire an additional water employee, both from a long-term knowledge and operational standpoint. We have Jim Finelli, who is my age and is, I'm not gonna lie, he's fifty-five as well. So, graduate of Madison High, nineteen eighty-two, so he is soon to, he's, he's going to be eligible to retire soon. And Tom Debiass, who is the foreman, is older. And so, there's going to be a lot of knowledge that potentially will be retiring out of the water utility, number one. Number two, I think it's incredible that we have five thousand five hundred customers that get served by the water utility and it's three people that get that water to five thousand five hundred places. And it's not only just getting the water there, it's dealing with the fire hydrants, it's dealing with the water mains, it's dealing with all the infrastructure. So, you know, certainly, this is a proposed budget. If council does not want to hire those positions, then we can have those discussions in between the council meetings and then come back and say what the difference would be if we didn't hire that person or if we wanted to hire more people. But, that is, that's what administration is recommending.
Can you talk about it?
Deb, you had a.
I have a couple more questions. We send the Rose Hall over to the Board of Ed. How much did we send to them for two thousand and nineteen?
So, we were, had budgeted a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for them and we just sent over the final payment for two thousand and nineteen. We wait until the money comes in and we send it out and it was over two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So, it was much more than we had anticipated and they gratefully accepted it and I saw on the bank statement that they cashed the check today. So, I just delivered it to Mark late last week. So, so the pilot did perform better than expected and we'll, we'll get into the revenues at the next council meeting when we talk about the budgets after the department heads. You'll see that on the, on that revenue line, I have an increase in the pilot revenue anticipating almost really to the max what I think we're gonna get. But, in total, in total, we're looking at close to seven hundred thousand dollars of revenue of property tax that's paid by that, that's paid by that property and that makes it the third highest ratable in town. We always said it was the second highest ratable, but then Realogy came in and fixed up their building beautifully and they kind of leapfrogged over. So, that development is, it's Allergan, it's Realogy, and then it's that property that pays the third most property taxes in town.
All right. Couple more. What does the future look like? I know you talked last week about capacity and transmission charges for electric or two weeks ago when we last met, not being certain about them, but is there an assumption they're increasing a certain amount or is there any information on that that would impact the budget?
We're, we're gonna work on that over the coming months and years. There's a lot of uncertainty. The Murphy's administration came out with the Energy Master Plan, which talks about a lot of wind generation and the electricity's being generated off the coast. And there needs to be a full transmission system developed to get the electricity from the wind farms out in the ocean to the mainland in, in New Jersey. And that's, doesn't exist and that's going to be very expensive underwater cabling. And we will pay our share of that. There's no way that any rate, every rate payer in New Jersey will pay for that through the development of transmission. How that happens and, and that could change if there were a change in administration, but the power utilities are not assuming that and so, they're moving forward under the assumption it's gonna work. So, we have to move in our mindset that that's an assumption. So, when we talk about reliant, reducing our reliance on electric utility and that's exactly some of the concerns that we have is, is with that.
And I'm gonna combine my last two because they're similar. Our equalization ratio is hovering around eighty percent and Chatham Borough had a similar rate and was ordered by the tax board to perform a reeval. So, do you think we might have to do a reeval in the not-too-distant future? And then, along the lines of that, some of the large buildings at Geralda, such as Quest, have been vacant for years and do we have exposure on tax appeals for those properties?
We do have exposure. We have a tax appeal reserve to protect us, so I don't think we have a financial exposure that we can't handle. We do put money aside every year, but when a building is empty like that, that is just unfortunately very easy for them to win a tax appeal. It happened with the Pfizer building when it was emptied and then Allergan came and we were able to get that tax, the tax at that property back up. The order from the tax board is driven by a number of things. One of them is the equalization ratio, which is near eighty percent, so it's close to Chatham. However, we had a reeval not-too-distant future, two thousand and twelve, Ray, was it? And Chatham's hadn't had there since two thousand and five. So, it's not only the equalization ratio, it's how long ago did you have your reeval and what's been happening? Are you, are you losing a ton of tax appeals? If you're losing a lot of tax appeals and they're getting a lot of cases at the tax board, they're like, you guys need to go reeval and make our life a little easier by not having so many cases in front of the tax board. So, those, those are indicators that we, we could be up for a reeval, but I'm a little, I, I think, I don't think it's gonna happen next year. I think maybe Ray and I, I'll take the bet with Ray that it might be a little more than a year or two, but he's typically not wrong though, so I'm not gonna.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just a few comments. I agree with Carmella. I support a gradual and measured water rate increase as well. I think it's important that we, we buffer any kind of sticker shock from having to do a sudden increase in that rate. And it's also important to make sure that we protect our public water utility. I mean, keeping Madison's water utility under our own ownership and control is critical as we see municipalities around the state that are having to sell off their utilities. So, it's a great benefit and resource to the town that we have our own infrastructure and we need to protect that. Moreover, having cheap water doesn't encourage conservation, which is something we should all strive for. You mentioned that some of the potential exposure that we had with regard to our budget and our surplus was on affordable housing. So, I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about what those potential costs are, what the risks are? I understand the borough will seek low-income housing tax credits to help fund the construction of the housing, but what happens if we don't receive those tax credits or receive fewer than we anticipated?
It will be very competitive. When the rounds for low-income tax credits come out, there'll be a number of towns and a number of developers that will be competing for those low-income housing tax credits and they, they help fund the project. If we're unable to get, or if there are other expenses that we don't foresee, it could, it would be in the millions of dollars. We do have a fair amount of money in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and the strategy that we're pursuing of having the MRCB, the location, we're in the midst of working through that process. That requires a significant amount of remediation over there, over a million dollars of remediation and the possible other, other things that will, will happen with the diversion request and settlement with the county. So, the dollars there are significant just to get the land ready and we're assuming that we get the low-income housing tax credits. If we don't and if we sign in, when we sign the agreement with Fair Share Housing Center, we're obligated to build that affordable housing, whether we get that low-income housing tax credits or not. So, that's, that is a significant exposure in, to the tune of millions of dollars. We're hopeful that that won't happen, but it, we rest a little easier knowing that we do have municipal surplus if we needed to dip into that to help, help bridge the funding.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So, very well done. Thank you. So, more to come on the budget and I think some of the takeaway is working on that two-point-nine right now is the homework assignment. All right. Plastic bag ban ordinance amendments. So, this is fairly consistent with what was discussed at our last council meeting. We have ordinance four, two thousand and twenty. That is listed for introduction tonight. That will address several things. One, number one, most importantly, is it doesn't change the implementation date of the ordinance passed back in October. It does do a, so we're consistent with Chatham's, is the definition of a reusable bag as stitch handles and ten mil? Thank you. Also, it gives the health officer the right to administratively give some waivers and this was intended to the concern of stores, these mostly small stores that can't put them to another, like a stop and shop can shift all their plastic bags to a jurisdiction that doesn't have a ban where a small store that only has one or two stores can't shift it. And as I've said several times over the last couple of weeks, the only thing worse than a single-use bag is a zero-use bag. So, we don't want these bags just to be tossed. So, it would give the health officer the ability to give someone a waiver to use up their stock beyond the March deadline. And then, the last was related to the concern that the, what I would call the mom-and-pop stores that deal with their neighbors and all that probably wouldn't want to be putting the burden of a ten-cent charge for a bag and probably may even eat the charge themselves. And so, there's a waiver for stores with fewer than ten employees that can do a giveaway of paper. of paper bag without charging the 10 cents. The feeling is that we're, what we have now, we'll get most of the paper bags out of the circulation, or we'll be the charge. You will see Whole Foods charging 10 cents for a full shopping bag, while you may see a small mom-and-pop store that doesn't use a full-size shopping bag not charging the 10 cents. So, there's the three items, and any questions or discussion? Deb, surprise.
Shocker, I know. First of all, overall, I'm very supportive of this, and I happened on Saturday, I hit, I think, five businesses in town as my husband and I went shopping, and I totally agree about the health officer having the discretion. Some of the businesses that have the big stocks, they order for the year. It makes no sense to make them, get rid of them without some flexibility, so I appreciate that. I personally am struggling with this, and paper bags provided by retail establishments with 10 or fewer employees being exempt from the 10 cents. I said it two weeks ago. I was in Maine, Connecticut, New Hampshire, Rhode Island, and Massachusetts over the winter break, and even before that last summer. You go into a store, and the first thing they say is, would you like a bag? And if you say yes, they say it's going to be 10 cents. It makes you think, well, I only have two things, and I'm going right back to my car. Do I need a bag? Do I not need a bag? And I, I struggle with taking, the goal is to get rid of people using non-reusable bags. So, I struggle with having an exception for this. I think change is hard, and once people have started doing it, it won't even be noticed. And the other question I have, it says with 10 or fewer employees, are we talking 10 full-time employees? Are we talking 10 part-time employees? Because if it's 10 part-time employees, that's a big, some of the stores only employ part-time people, but they may have 20 part-time people, or they may have five part-time and five full-time. So, I just, I think it's an unnecessary exception to the rule, because I think once people are doing it, and I really wish the state would just do what all the New England states have done and pass a statewide ban, but, which would make it easier. But I think we just need to keep the ordinance to the, to the spirit of it, to get rid of all of the single-use, non-reusable items. Thank you.
And Deb and I have had an extended conversation around this one, and I think one of the differences is the, the key with locally elected officials is that, unlike state legislators who can, who pass the laws and never go into stores where it affected, we, we do, we do it on a regular basis, and so I think that's part of reacting to what, what we've heard from our store owners. Certainly, I would, whatever the wish of the council is on this issue, you know, be supportive of that. But I'm leaning towards the exception, and I'm still, fingers crossed that the state will do the right thing and pass a statewide ban. Any thoughts?
Yeah, you know, as I, I mentioned to Deb previously, if we, we had the state coming out and with a very good ordinance, I, I think things would be a lot, a lot different. But I, you know, I noticed a couple of places, and I'll just name this one place, it went into Harvest Bistro about a week ago, and they, they only have about three people that work in there automatically, because the Chamber and DDC have talked to them about this ordinance and whatever. They went to paper straws, paper boxes, and they used no plastic whatsoever. Okay? So, I, I think what can happen, in my opinion, Deb, is that, you know, the mom-and-pop stores will see the value of it when everybody else is doing what this, this ordinance intends. I think it'd be okay. But I, I think from, a little bit of a concern is the mom-and-pop stores have a lot more, a lot more problems, you know, than a bigger, like Stop &amp; Shop or ShopRite or whatever. Okay? So, they may need that opportunity to use up what they already have and whatever. I kind of agree with you, but I, I think what we have to do is just let this go and kind of enforce, like, education on it a little bit more, you know, to the smaller stores and say, hey, listen, you know, how can we help you? You know, in, in that manner. So...
Maureen?
It's my opinion.
You know, we, we started this evening talking about Sal Luciano and Prima on Main. I think a lot of our, a lot of our small, homegrown merchants have been on the vanguard of, of paper for a long time. I mean, I, I shop at Prima for Christmas presents because they do a beautiful job of wrapping everything and then putting it in paper bags. And so, I think, I think actually, I think a lot of our smaller businesses have already embraced the paper bag, and I don't think it's going to be that difficult to, I don't think it's going to be that difficult to lift for, for small businesses.
Just to clarify, my issue isn't that letting people have the exemption for the bags that they have if they do have plastic, and I agree, a lot of them are using the paper. My personal issue is the exemption for the 10-cent fee for the paper bag, because I just feel it's changed, people need to get used to it, it just happens, and it makes people think. So, many of the stores, you go into the Pink Pear, they only have paper bags. You know, I already, I talked to Chris, it was one of the stores I was in on Saturday, and we had a nice conversation about it, and he said if he could get an exemption for a couple of months to go through them, he happens to have a store in Wykoff that hasn't put the ban in yet, so he said he'd move them there if he needed to, but he would appreciate the exemption. So, that my issue is not an exemption for businesses that have already ordered for the year. My issue is this, who pays 10 cents versus who doesn't pay 10 cents, because I really feel that if we, we make the change, rip off the Band-Aid, in six months, nobody's going to remember we were debating about a 10-cent fee, because people are, it's just going to be habit like it is in so many other states.
So, thoughts, should we leave, leave it in as proposed or pull it out? Again, my feeling is a lot of these stores will be saying, I'm going to throw the 10 cents in for you, and I don't want to put that burden on them.
We take a consensus of the council. I mean, is there, you want to pull that, that one out? That statement?
Well, we haven't introduced it, so we can, we can, we can change, yeah.
Just leave the existing ordinance as is from October and see how it goes?
If you leave the existing... No, no, we, we, we need to, we need to introduce tonight to take care of the administrative exemption and the definition of a, a bag, and it's, the question is, do we want to give the exemption, add one more exemption? There are several exemptions already for the charge. There are six, currently, there are six exemptions for charging the 10 cents for a paper bag. We're adding a seventh one, so, and that would, my last argument would be, there's a whole lot of overlap in those exemptions, and so maybe we're adding two or three stores, but the, we're helping the mom-and-pop not have to be...
I think if you, if you introduce the ordinance tonight, the October ordinance exists. If you introduce this ordinance this evening, and you decide not to go through with it, you don't have to adopt it at the second reading, or if you make further modifications in its material, you'll have to reintroduce it again. But the October, it was in October of 19 that the ordinance passed, that exists. You're just trying to clarify and modify it based on these nuances that are occurring with the various size stores.
So, what we could do as far as this is a motion either to support this exemption, and we'll have a vote on that, and then go forward, or a motion not to support this exemption.
But, you know, if I could make a suggestion, this is an introduction. It would give us an opportunity, you know, for Lisa maybe to talk to Downtown Development Commission, somebody to talk to the Chamber, and ask the mom-and-pop stores, the few that there are, about what their feelings are. And my feeling is, as Madisonians, they're going to say, no, I don't need the exception. I, I'll do it. That's my opinion, because I think that's the way Madison works. But this is an introduction only, and it will give us an opportunity, I think, to hear from those small stores, you know?
Sorry, couple will go?
Where we, we really...
So, Matt, if we introduce it and then we decide to pull that exception, is that a substantive?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be...
Then you'd have to reintroduce it.
Right.
If you want to do the other ones, I mean, the other way of doing it is this evening, you guys could come to consensus, move that one exemption, and then have a hearing on the remainder of the amendments except for that one exception, and then that would not be a substantive change. And then you could always do your canvassing, and then amend it again and add the, the seventh exemption if you so desire.
I think we've canvassed pretty well, and I think...
It'll never get going.
Yeah. My, my, if I had my druthers, might be in a bag or not, is to go ahead and move forward with, as proposed for tonight, and, you know, if, you can always, we can always come back and do one, one further and say, you know, let's strip it away.
It's not going to prevent me from voting for it, because I support it overall. I just think it's something that...
It's a good question.
We created a, a plastic ban restriction, and now we've got so many exemptions that some of them, which are exemptions that every other town has, that adding another one because we, and I love our stores. Like I said, I was at five different ones and shopped and paid at every single one of them on Saturday, and will continue to do that. I just think the spirit of this is to get rid of all of the single-use stuff, and we're not doing a deterrent. And if a business chooses to eat the cost, that's on the business if they want to, you know, but I, I don't know. So, I would still vote for it as is. I'm just frustrated by having another exemption added to it.
Are we okay with moving forward? All right. So, we will introduce as, with those three items as proposed. Thank you. So, we move on. There are no ordinance for hearing, because ordinance 3, 2020 has a hearing date set for February 24th. I appreciate everyone's patience. Now, we come on to our second invitations for discussion. This is when you may talk on any topic, including the tree protection ordinance, which is the ordinance 3, 2020. Just to remind the public, the reason we added that extra meeting in between was to allow for public input on that, the tree protection ordinance. So, we will be able to hear your comments tonight and also at the hearing in two weeks. Anyone commenting on any topic, and Pat knows these rules, but I will review it anyway because I have to remind him, because he now has a limit, which he didn't have before. So, you're, we try, try to keep your comments to three minutes, but as you saw, as you saw before, you get a one-minute race, but it's a hard stop at four minutes. And state your name, your address, and go ahead. Pat, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pat Rowe, 25 Pine Avenue, longtime Borough resident, actually, it'll be 30 years this year. Actually, first, I wasn't going to talk about this, but I didn't realize Joanna was going to be here. I do agree with her position about, and I've spoken to you guys about this in the past, and this was whether I was on the Board of Ed, on the Borough Council, or now as a private citizen with no children in the school district. I don't think the Borough should be charging any taxpayer-supported property the electric rate above what it costs to deliver the electricity, so that's the all-in cost, but not the extra 25 to 33% that we tack on as an ordinance. In terms of the budget, it's hard to analyze the 2.9%, because you guys haven't really presented the entire budget yet. But, you know, I'd like to point out a couple. First of all, you should get this sheet filled out. I gave it to you guys last year. This really tells you if, once Jim fills it in, what the Borough's financial position is. And I was scribbling some numbers down after your last meeting, and I scribbled some more down tonight. You know, right now, you're sitting on over $5 million in your free balance in your municipal budget, your free balance in your electric utility is another three, plus the million and a half that's set aside for the substation repair, and the water department did really well this year. It's now up to 1.7. All in, your free balance is now over $10 million, which is at least $2 million more than it was a couple of years ago. So, before you start to look at a significant tax increase, I would really look at the money that you've been accumulating and see how much of, or some of that could be fed back to mitigate the, the cost of the increase. I was also listening to the discussion last time, and I know you guys passed a change to the dividend, which essentially is going to slightly increase the tax, the electric rate. But I would also remind you again, given that there's $3.3 million in the free balance, when Ben Wolkowitz and I analyzed this 2016, late, and we passed an ordinance, it said, you know, the minimum free balance should be about $1 million. You guys are significantly above that, and that was one of the reasons why we pushed for an increase last year in the dividend. And I really would have preferred if you guys waited a little longer and actually maybe kept it at least at the same rate it was, possibly even increasing it. I don't see the reason for an increase there. Same thing for the water utility. The water utility's doing really well. I understand we're paying less than surrounding communities, but that barely offsets the amount of, we pay extra for the electric utility right now. So, I'll be back. Those are my initial thoughts. I've passed some of them on to you already in extensive communication, and I'll continue to pass them along. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. Looking forward to having you come back again. And just to clarify, the dividend was approved at, last year's annualized dividend was $2 million, so the second half of the year was at a rate of 2.3, but the, so this was an, this is an annualized $2 million, so the effect, yes, it's lower than the second half of the year, but the effect to the consumer is equivalent of last year. But more, more to be seen on the dividend, as pointed out. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please step forward.
Good evening, Council Mayor, everybody. I am Alan Sawyer. I live at Fox Chase Road in Madison, and I would like to express my concern against the proposed tree ordinance. I know you're going to talk about it again. I think that there's a couple of key points that I don't like relative to being a residential owner-occupied house and the limitations it puts on me, and I expressed some of that in the email that I sent to Mr. Cody, I believe, was forwarded to everybody. I am also, want to express a concern about the fact that the proposed ordinance is imposing that the municipal, new position, a municipal arborist and the shade tree board step in and attempt to approve vegetation plans for public utilities and NJ Transit. I believe that is a liability that the town should not assume. I do not believe that the ordinance has written that those people should be deciding whether or not a public utility should decide not to conduct a vegetation plan because the arborist is concerned about that particular tree and doesn't understand the impact of public safety associated with infrastructure and public utilities. That's bad business for the town, I believe. So, I think that's really important to think about before you implement that aspect of the ordinance. And again, I would like to express that I am concerned and would like to be able to manage my own property as I wish. If I want to take a tree down, I want to be able to take a tree down. I don't want to be limited by the way the ordinance is currently written, and I also don't want to be obligated to have to replace a tree under the rules and have to go buy it in a special place and have a certain guarantee. My yard grows so many trees on its own, I don't need to buy trees. I can transplant and grow all the trees I need in my yard. Why can't I do that? Why do I have to buy the tree that you mandate from a certain place? That's my preliminary opinion of the proposed tree ordinance.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please step forward.
Hi, I'm Sarah Webb. I know some of you already, and I already communicated with each of you through an email my views in support of the tree protection ordinance.
And your address, Sarah?
Sorry?
Address?
28 Barnesdale Road. I guess I should write that down. Yeah, I've lived in Madison for 30 years, and I'm an emeritus professor at Drew University, and my field is forest ecology and environmental science. So, I'm really, you know, kind of an expert on trees and have the view that also, from the environmental perspective, I mean, these trees, we all love our trees, and it's one of the reasons we're the most, the best place to live in New Jersey is our trees, right? But in terms of the resilience of the town and our ecological and environmental sustainability in the future with, with climate change, there's a lot of bigger-picture reasons to be protecting our urban forest, and I'm going to be brief, because I've already, you know, emailed you all these points, but there are a lot of ways in which the climate's changing, and even if it weren't, there's so many things our trees do for us as ecological services that aren't always obvious. And one is they're really important to recharging the groundwater and minimizing how much surface water flow there is. So, especially in these cases of clearcutting of lots for construction, you have a really big change in where our water's going. It's running immediately across the surface and flooding our, our streets and our basements, and minimizing then how much goes down into the soil and slowly gets into our groundwater. So, overall, that's a really important hydrological function of our trees, and it keeps the soil in place as well. They also really provide a certain kind of habitat as a whole. The whole town is a bit of a forest. It's called an urban forest, when you don't have much under the trees, but just trees. But between our public spaces, our trees, our streets, and our private homes, we have quite a lot of... of tree cover that's helping us with our water and keeping the birds coming through. And I mentioned resilience. We now know, science is really clear, that the best way to bring back carbon out of the atmosphere is to grow, one of the best places, is to grow and protect large trees that are already existent. They take up carbon much more quickly at a higher rate than little trees do or other kinds of plants, and especially forests full of trees, little patches of woods like we have at the back of Barnesdale Road. They're really doing a lot of carbon absorption. And they're also providing a habitat on the bigger picture where so many plants and animals are losing ground in their habitat and need to move northward, poleward, as their environmental conditions that they require have moved to different locations. And so having a bit of a refuge and a transition area for the migratory birds is really another function of having a townwide spotty but somewhat more intact forest canopy, as we see it so much, losing ground in recent years with droughts, with windstorms, which are increasing in intensity. Again, there's a climate limit. Am I out of town?
One minute.
Okay, well, I said it was going to be really brief, so I will, we'll stop there. But I feel like also I recognize that people feel their freedom to manage their property as perhaps under fire. I think people need to read the ordinance very closely and see how little restriction there really is on them as individuals. And we have potentially a decline by 1,000 cuts if we keep losing patches of trees and trees in town without replacing them. So thank you very much. I think you all are doing a wonderful job on all these environmental fronts, and the Shade Tree Commission particularly, I think it's a real shout-out. So that's...
Thank you, Sarah. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please step forward.
My name is Allison Hock, and I'm at 114 Woodland. I would first like to say I agree with the need to have the tree protection ordinance, however it's written. I just don't, can't support it. I strongly agree with the need to protect properties from clearcutting by developers as new or significant construction is being done. It's a shame that developers often clearcut or nearly clearcut lots as they build and alter homes for a profit. And this practice should be considerably limited or stopped. However, I don't feel this proposed ordinance incorporates the best parts from other municipality ordinances and protects current homeowners. I don't, I do not support the removal exemption to two non-significant trees per 24 months. I feel there should be no restrictions on the exempt removal of two trees within 24 months. In fact, I find this aspect to be quite intrusive as a current property owner. While reviewing neighboring municipalities' ordinances, there are examples of other towns who not require, do not put on restrictions on the annual exemption of tree removal. I propose if the homeowner is living in the property, he or she should have no restrictions on the exemption to remove the two trees per 24 months. I also notice many municipalities allow exemptions for removal of dead, dying, diseased, or damaged trees. As proposed, a permit would be needed, and the borough arborist would need to grant approval to remove such trees. It feels as if it's a waste of time and resources to require permit to remove those types of trees. And quite frankly, gives the feeling that we don't trust homeowners to make the right decision. I also notice many municipalities allow exemptions for removal, I also would like to mention as a Madison resident, for nearly my whole life, I don't see current homeowners living on their properties as the real issue with tree cutting and loss of canopy. Quite expensive for homeowners to remove trees, and many of us value the trees and the benefits they provide. I see developers as the real issue, many of whom are not vested in the community's homeowners, and more focused on making a profit than protecting trees. As such, I suggest the tree ordinance focus on those activities and property ownership. For instance, not only requiring developers, when doing construction on a property, to replace trees they remove, but also require them to plant trees should there not be enough trees on that property to begin with, regardless, regardless of whether they want to remove any trees or not. Hanover is an example of a town that has that in their ordinance. And also Morris Town focuses their ordinance on those that, on tree removal with connection to construction and not owner-occupied properties. In conclusion, as the current and long-term resident of Madison, who truly values the environment and the benefits of our trees, I ask you to reconsider some aspects of this ordinance. Please allow us to cut down two trees without limits to the exemption and narrow it to owner-occupied properties. Also, put additional limits, restrictions...
One minute.
And/or requirements on non-owner-occupied properties when doing construction, which would significantly discourage clearcutting or extensive tree removal, sorry, by those looking to profit from our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please step forward.
Kirsten Wallenstein, 4 Westerly Avenue. Sorry, I can't multitask. I just wanted to voice my support for the tree ordinance. One of the reasons my family moved to this town was for, you know, the walkability, the downtown, the beauty of the trees. And I just noticed after a few years that more and more clear cutting was happening, and I'm a tree hugger, I have to tell you. And so I'm the kind of person that's like looking around, why is that tree coming down? So I finally asked a builder, I said, why are you taking this tree down? It's this huge old mature tree on Central Avenue. And he said, it just wouldn't look good in front of a new house. And that house was on the market for a while. It wasn't as though the buyer was already involved, but that just made me think, wow, you know, that decision had been made. If I were buying that house, I would want that tree. I would want, you know, all the benefits, the shade, the cleaning of the water, the having clean air for my kids, et cetera. And so I think it is important to have a tree ordinance. Another just personal thing is, that probably affects a lot of people, is where I live now, we can hear Route 24, we can hear the nighttime football games, we can hear things better than ever because you don't have that noise reduction. So every time more trees come down, you know, you just have, it affects the environment. So that's it. I appreciate that this has been drafted. I really hope it goes through, and we get to see these huge majestic beautiful trees throughout Madison. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
My name is Chris Shore, and I live on Shady Lawn Drive in Madison. But when I speak to you tonight, I would like to speak to you not just as someone who's lived here for 45 years, but as the president of the Friends of Madison Shade Tree. And I have been part of that organization which Judy Mullins started, recognizing 35 years ago that trees, I guess, have no voice. They provide services for us, they clean the air, they give us the oxygen we breathe, they channel the groundwater, they put water into the aquifer that we're drying, that we draw as a community, we draw our drinking water from. So the location of the tree has little to do with the value it provides to the whole community. And it saddens me that after my 15 years, but I serve with people who've been on that board for 30 years, that we have fewer trees than we did 15 years ago, that it's the major trees that two generations won't see enough time to replace. So what I would really hope for this ordinance, which isn't nearly draconian enough for me, I would hope that this would serve as a kind of an educational function. We have people who give us money to plant trees, but I have to acknowledge that at the rate of 189 small trees to do the work of one significant or landmark tree, we haven't even caught up. And every time one of those trees comes down, it's a loss to all of us. So the educational function that this might provide is to encourage people less to think of, it's on my property, I can cut it down if I want to. I would like them to recognize the stewardship that's involved in that, not just for a new-generation person like me, but for second and third and fourth-generation families here. There have to be trees for the kids. We have much higher asthma rates because the trees are not cleaning the allergens because the trees are gone. People cut down trees because they're afraid of the next storm, and they don't necessarily check to see if they're diseased. This ordinance makes it clear that if the tree is dangerous or diseased, there's no permit, there's no charge, there's nothing that the town does to intervene at all. So the real function of this is to provide a short pause between the time you feel like you'd like to cut a tree down, to find out what the tree really does and to think of it less in terms of it's in my backyard...
One minute.
And therefore it's my tree, and more in terms of this is part of my community, and my tree adds to the air, my tree cleans the water, my tree saves my neighbor's land. It's a stewardship question, and I think the board would do well to provide legislation that is in favor of stewardship of our land and trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please step forward. Richard, why don't you work your way up so you're ready to go next?
Hi, I'm Bridget Daly, 28 Keeve Street. I support the borough's desire to have this shade tree ordinance. I just would like to comment on two aspects of the ordinance. At the last meeting, several members of the council expressed concerns about the proposed $350 fee to the town for a replacement tree. I'd just like to give my perspective on that fee. The ordinance specifies that any removed tree that requires a permit must be replaced on a one-to-one basis. And if the site in question cannot physically accommodate the total replacement amount of trees, a fun, I'm sorry, a fee of $350 per replacement tree may be paid by the property owner to the borough's tree fund in lieu of such replacement. I personally think $350 is fair, and I'd like to point out that in many cases, $350 is not even going to cover the cost of buying and planting a replacement tree. For example, last spring, I bought an eastern red bud tree that's only about eight feet tall. It's comprised of several small trunks, each measuring about four inches in diameter or less. I paid $870, 550 for the tree, and plus $320 for planting. Also, if someone cuts down a mature tree, multiple new trees, as has been pointed out by Chris and others, would actually have to be planted to replace the environmental benefits of one old growth tree, and the ordinance does not account for that. So for example, during his presentation at the Borough Council meeting last time, Jean Krakovia stated that it would take 121 trees with a trunk diameter of two and a half inches to get the environmental value of just one 16-inch diameter tree. Also, as was mentioned, among the exemptions, the ordinance states, any property owner shall be permitted to remove two non-significant trees, meaning with a diameter of less than 16 inches, on their property within any 24-month period without applying for a tree removal permit. I would say that's generous. I would actually say that's too generous. A 15-inch diameter tree, which would count as a non-significant tree, would be as old as 45, 60, or even 75 years, depending upon the species. And, you know, going back to the price, while I appreciate the concern for homeowners of modest means, from experience, I think it's safe to assume that those homeowners of modest means are not capriciously cutting down trees, excuse me, because that's a big expense in and of itself to cut down a tree. And also, the ordinance specifically includes a hardship, includes hardship as a factor that will be considered in the application process. And then on a separate, quick aspect...
One minute.
Okay, thank you. I also request that the borough make every effort to plant native trees and that the borough and its arborists encourage and incentivize residents to plant native tree species as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Bridget.
Richard Zipper, 197 Greenwood. I think the big problems why the tree canopy has been reduced, let's say the last decade, number one reason, Hurricane Sandy, Hurricane Irene, the October surprise, okay? Number two reason is overambitious development. And this is a big problem where they take a little house and they put a house that goes from 10 feet on that property line to 10 feet on that property line, okay? This is a problem that everybody's talking about, okay? And that has to do with the trees as well. I don't think that the fees are going to pay the salary of the arborist. The $25 fee to cut down a tree, I mean, have the arborist come and look at a tree is going to take them an hour, and they said it's $95 an hour for an arborist, so I think you need to rethink the budget for this. I think the point was made that the typical homeowner is not just willy-nilly cutting down trees because it costs $2,000, $3,000 to cut down a tree. People aren't just, no, I don't like that tree, I'm going to pull $3,000 bucks out of my pocket and cut it down. So I really don't like the way the blame for all this is being put on homeowners. Okay, and that's, that's what I have to say about the trees. I have a couple, one question, who gets the 10 cents?
It stays with the shop owner.
The shop owner gets the 10 cents.
Yes.
I don't know, I don't know how it's going to work out. I mean, this seems kind of like a conflict of interest there to me, that the shop owner gets 10 cents for a bag, because the bag doesn't cost 10 cents. So anyway, that's that. Now, the thing about the budget, all right, we need to find ways of saving money. The salaries were, I almost fell off my chair when I saw some of those salaries. I have, I have a way you can save just a little bit of money. It's just going to be a drop in the bucket. That person you're hiring for the recycling center, to monitor the recycling center, I understand that you want to keep out-of-towners from coming and dumping in our recycling center. That I get. Why can't you use one of these fancy license plate readers and one of these moving gates? So only Madison residents can get into the recycling center. You won't need to pay a person to watch.
One minute.
Okay. Saving money, Morris County used to have a program called the R S B P program. It's Retired Senior Volunteer Program. There are a lot of retired professionals in Madison who have engineering degrees, CPAs, all kinds of professional knowledge that the town could use if there was some kind of retired senior volunteer program in Madison to help some of these professionals analyze some of these problems that were happening. For instance, saving money. I'm sure if there was a group of people that could just look at what was going on, they could come up with a lot of ways of saving money. You guys are very busy, I can see, doing all these things at the beginning of the meeting, watching all these departments.
Time.
Can't do it all.
Sorry. Thank you, thank you, Richard. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, close this part of the meeting, so I want to thank everyone for the input on the tree protection ordinance. As said, we put this extra meeting in between so the council can get the feedback. The hearing is scheduled for the next meeting. If there's any substantial changes, it would have to be reintroduced, otherwise we'd move forward. We have a meeting later this week to discuss some of the things that have been, that have come up. Just a couple clarification things. There are some ordinances that have been tossed because it separated the requirements from developers and residents, and so there are some limitations. We certainly recognize that most residents want to do the right thing, and most laws don't... don't take it, or not for the people doing the right thing, it's for the people doing the wrong thing. So that's what, why, what we have to kind of go with. And thanks for all the suggestions on the budget. As you've seen, we've got a lot of work to do there. So we now move on to introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for February the 24th, 2020. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call it ordinances for first reading. I ask the borough clerk to read said ordinances by title. Ordinance 4-2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending Chapter 136A of the Borough Code entitled Plastic Bags Single Use, prohibiting the use of plastic bags and regulating the use of plastic bags by retail establishments within the borough.
Mayor, I move ordinance 4-2020.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
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 Ordinance 5-2020.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $40,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for additional design changes to the recycling center construction project.
Mayor, I move ordinance 5-2020.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Okay, consent to agenda resolution. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move Resolution R 71-2020 to R 81-2020, and then R 83-2020 and R 84-2020. Second.
And just a reminder, R 82, we've already passed, which is why. Hold. Any other they need discussion or need to be pulled? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
There is no unfinished business? Approval of vouchers? Will clerk please read the voucher registry?
The general capital fund, $43,821. Electric operating fund, $83,732.45. The water operating fund, $41,839.15. Water capital fund, $41,601.93. And for the trust, $6,752.52. The total is $621,196.63.
Mayor, I, I move approval of the vouchers. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Yes.
Under new business, with help of Dr. Peter Freed, we have a grant, $10,000 from the Sustainable Jersey Garden Air Grant, and this will help us develop or study the potential of a community solar program, which is, means that residents that may not be able to put solar on their own homes could buy into a community solar program. So we need to get rolling forward and looking at the possibilities and locations and how this would exactly work. So I would like to appoint the following task force. Mayor Robert Conley, Councilwoman Rachel Erlich, Claire Whitcomb from Madison Environmental Commission, Kathy Kakavell, and Peter Freed from Sustainable Madison, Tom Harriman Plutus as past member of Environmental Commission and a resident at large, Borough Administrator Ray Cody, Chief Financial Officer Jim Burnett, Borough Engineer Bob Vogel, and Communications Specialist Michael Plessier. Please, can I have a motion to accept those?
Mayor, I move appointments of the new solar committee. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Rachel?
Aye.
Oh, no. I assumed you said aye, but.
I didn't actually, and I thought you heard, but I didn't say it. I was like, I didn't.
Thank you for saying aye.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?